Let's move on to item number eight, public hearing. First read introduction of an ordinance, California 23-03, to allow freeway-oriented signs with a digital display on properties meeting certain criteria in the FVC SP. Presentation by Matt Jenkins, senior planner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. The item before you tonight is for a code amendment to the Fountain Valley Crossing specific plan to allow for digital on-premise signage in the specific plan area. Mike Thompson's RV has submitted a request for the code amendment to allow for the digital on-premise signage in the workplace gateway section of the Crossing specific plan, which is all the purple properties along the 405 freeway, as you see here on the specific plan. Just want to make a clarification. Signs that display goods or services produced or sold on the property are called on-premise signs. And this is different than off-premise signs, such as a billboard that advertises products and services that are not available at the location or offered for sale on the site. Just give some background. Currently, the Crossing specific plan allows freeway signage in a limited capacity, limiting freeway signs up to 20 feet tall and up to 200 square feet per display area. And at the planning commission meeting on November 8th of 2023, they voted three to two recommending to the city council to approve the proposed code amendment for you tonight. So the proposed amendment would allow the display of freeway-oriented signs on any site in the workplace gateway with more than 1,100 feet of continuous freeway frontage. Additional standards, such as the amount of time each message can be displayed, the illumination level, size, have been incorporated into the code amendment that are similar for other signs that the city has approved along the freeway. So as I said, a site must have 1,100 feet of freeway frontage to be eligible for digital on-premise signs. And as Mike Thompson's RV is the applicant for the code amendment, they proposed a sign on their property approximately right here. And Mike Thompson's RV site has 1,130 feet of freeway frontage, which would make them eligible for a sign. And they drafted a site plan. This is the Mike Thompson's RV property. Our Mike Thompson's RV site proposed sign would be right here. So what Mike Thompson's RV is proposing would be a 50-foot-tall structure designed at an angle with the display sign, the electronic display sign at the top. The digital display measures 13 feet wide or tall by 34 feet wide for a total of 442 square feet. Sign would have two panels angled and a back panel on the back to conceal any exposed equipment on the back of the sign. And they've proposed, or they've shown two renderings of what the sign might look like. This is a view on the northbound side of the 405 freeway with the proposed sign right here on the Mike Thompson's RV site. This is a view looking south. And the designer of this proposed sign for Mike Thompson's RV also designed a sign, a similar sign, for Giant RV on the 5 freeway in Downey. And a similar situation here, this flat freeway with the dealership on the south side of the freeway. And this sign that is designed by the applicant, this sign is a total of 40 feet tall, whereas the proposed sign for Fountain Valley would be the same height just to the electronic image, but would be actually 10 feet taller than what you see here. But here again, similar to what is proposed at the Mike Thompson's RV site, on-premise electronic sign on the north side of the freeway, same sign on the scene on the south side of the freeway. And to represent the height of the proposed sign, the applicant raised a lift with 34-foot-wide rod with flags at either end to represent what a possible sign could look like. Just to give you some kind of physical presence out there. This picture is taking view showing north where the proposed sign is right here on the south side of the freeway at 40 feet tall again. And the rod is 34 feet wide. This is a view looking south, a little closer view there with the boom with the rod there. And here again, right there. And this simulation was raised on February 28th and was left up for a couple of weeks in case you hadn't had a chance to see it. I went out and took pictures of the only residential that is nearby. It's the Tiburon condominium community to the west on Ward Street. And this picture is looking east. And this was taken when the, their simulation was up with the boom and the rod. And you can see it's right there. So that would be the top of the sign, of a proposed sign. Again, two other pictures. Again, this is down, down the street. The simulation being right there. This is a little bit farther north in between the garages on the property. And the sign is right here, obscured behind one of the buildings on their property where they have multiple light poles with banners on them as well. This view is looking at the exit of Tiburon looking east. Again, with the simulation right there. And just so you know what Tiburon looks like, all the residential windows except for one right here do not directly face towards the sign. They face, their windows face north and south. None of the windows face towards the street, towards Mike Thompson's RV. So that concludes staff's report. And I'm available for any questions if you have any. Thank you.
Do we have any questions before we go to public hearing? Councilmember Constantine?
Okay, so I have a question. Why was the balloons placed at 40 feet when in reality it should be 50 feet, an additional 10 feet high?
I believe they placed it at 40 feet tall to show the, 40 feet tall and 34 feet wide to show the outline of where the digital face would be, not the entire structure itself, because a portion, only a portion would go to 50 feet. This portion up here. But the 34-foot rod was to simulate essentially the top of the digital display right here. Because then if you had it 10 feet taller, then the 34-foot-wide rod would be right here. It might, you might think that the sign would be taller. Just to clarify though, that this tonight before you is a code amendment. It's not to approve this sign. The code amendment would require that the city sign committee approve any onsite digital signage in the crossing. So should you approve the code amendment tonight, one would have to, or Mike Thompson's RV would have to apply for a sign permit. And the city sign committee would have to review and approve that sign.
Thank you.
So I have a question for you. So it's 1,100 continuous feet for you along the freeway. Are there any other businesses within the city of Fountain Valley that has 1,100 continuous feet on the freeway?
Not currently, no.
And how did we come up with 1,100?
By adding up the properties that the site contains, so.
Yeah, I understand that part.
If I may, Mr. Mayor and council members, I think what we tried to do was narrowly focus the ordinance to allow for a sign with a large portion of frontage along the freeway in addition to limiting it to vehicle sales lots. So the true nature is, one, vehicle sales lots normally have some sort of signage on the freeway. And we wanted to make it so that there was a large frontage to allow for such a sign.
Okay, and just for curiosity's sake, how far or how wide is Hyundai, the Hyundai property? If you know, approximately?
The Hyundai property is less than 1,000.
Okay, less than 1,000, all right. Do you want to go to public hearing or you want to go first?
I'd like to keep.
Go ahead, Councilmember Constantine, please.
Thank you. So really, this goes against our strict signage ordinance. And if approved to change the way we're doing things now, could other businesses indeed want to bring in signage, especially in our coveted crossings area?
They would need to qualify. So they would need to be 1,100 feet linear length along the freeway and be a vehicle sales lot. And then they could apply to the sign committee for approval of the sign. So currently, no other businesses would comply with that.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, council majority approved the digital billboard for the, by the water tank. It's not here yet, and I don't care if it ever comes. But people gotta be looking where they're going, getting on the freeway and merging, not looking at signs, new signs even. Thank you.
Thank you. Attorney for the city, a quick question. Do we allow the applicant to speak at this point? I know it's not for their sign, but are they allowed to? I guess more than three minutes, I guess, is the clarification question.
It's my understanding that the applicant brought the request for a code amendment to staff. So they would be an applicant. This, this.
So we can allow them to speak?
Right.
All right, I just wanted to, and we'll give you a chance to want to confirm that. Councilmember Harper, please.
I have a question. So within the, if we change the ordinance, we change the ordinance, what are the, what would be the allowable height of a sign according to the change in the ordinance?
50 feet.
Are you sure? I thought, I thought 60 feet was the maximum height allowable.
That's the allowable height in the manufacturing zone. Per this code amendment, the maximum height would be 50 feet though.
Would be 50 feet, okay, thank you.
Any other questions from council? I'm going to allow the applicant. Do you want to speak now or do you want to hear the questions from the public first?
Sure, I can answer the questions then. I could probably answer all the questions that come up.
Okay, I'm going to be fair here as much as I can. So at this point, I'm going to open up the public hearing, get to bang the gavel again. And Cheryl, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
First speaker is Cheryl Brothers, followed by Katie Wright.
Welcome back, Cheryl.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and council members. It's no surprise that I've always supported these digital billboards along the freeway. I'm glad that you have limited it to 1,100 square feet, linear feet of frontage. That does limit the number of signs that can even apply. And one of the reasons Mike Thompson wanted this sign was he lost his very iconic waterfall and pile of rocks when they expanded the freeway. And so I think he feels the need to do something above and beyond. And I think it's a decent design. And it, it is what's coming. You know, if you don't like digital signs, then maybe we should go back to the telegraph and abandon our phones. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Katie Wright, followed by Andrea Martel.
Welcome back, Katie.
There's just no getting over me. I don't want to act like I'm trying to tell anyone how to run their business. I've got plenty to do taking care of my own business. A few years ago in Sacramento, my husband and I went shopping for an RV. And we knew exactly where to find all the RV sales locations up in the Sacramento County area and beyond. We did our research. We did our not-so-telegraph internet searching to find out the specs, to see what our truck could handle. People who are shopping for an RV know how to shop for an RV. If I had unlimited time, I would turn around and I would ask for a show of hands, who in this audience, our audience is not what it was earlier, but who in here either has owned or rented or bought or purchased or shopped for an RV? Lot of people. Lot of people know how to do that. They know, all props and respect. I know there's RVs there. I know where Mike Thompson's is. I've never been on the lot. We wound up, we bought the RV. They actually sold us an RV that our truck would not handle. We actually canceled the sale due to that. And we felt bad because that location in Sacramento County wasn't fair. But the truth is, I don't really have anywhere to park an RV in Fountain Valley. Do we notice there's a pattern here? There's a real problem with parking here in Fountain Valley, just saying. But of course, people know how to shop. They probably come from all over to shop at this location, which is probably sterling location to shop at, no doubt. But I know where the RVs are. If I'm looking for an RV place to shop, the very first place I will try is right here in Fountain Valley. I have nothing, I've heard nothing but good things about Mike Thompson as a human being and as a business owner. But I don't think you need that, frankly. I don't think, it looks like the back end of a 747 hanging out. I don't like it, I don't want it. It's disingenuous to show a boom on a crane, not the full height, because, okay, you don't want to show the full height. People are going to freak out thinking that's the full height and dimension of the whole thing. But you're still cheating and being disingenuous on the height. I don't like the looks. You're not even talking about the Greenbrook neighborhood. You're picking and choosing where you're getting your stats from, where you're getting your photographs from. I don't want to be paranoid. I'm not paranoid. I just don't like when I'm sitting here and it feels like I'm being sold a bill of goods on something and not being given the real picture of what's going on. And frankly, everyone knows that's where the RVs are. And the first place I would look is a nice, well-kept place on this freeway where you can see how beautiful all those RVs are. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie.
Andrea Martel, followed by Rudy Hubner.
So when I moved to Fountain Valley, my husband and I were into RVing. And we didn't need any signs to find Mike Thompson's. It's right there in the, on, you can look it up on your cell phone. You can find it everywhere. Driving along the freeway at 60 miles an hour, you pass that sign. You are not going to do a turnaround and go back to that right there. Everybody in the county knows where Mike Thompson's RV, if they're into RVing. It's, it's a conspicuous business of its own because it's fairly unique. And I don't think we need all that. I really don't. And I don't know what the, what the reasoning would be for the city to grant this. I remember back when they were having the hearings on the big double-digit sign and everything, that they, that we were going to fund the pensions for the city with the revenue from that. I don't know if this is supposed to create a revenue stream that we are needed by the city. That would be a question I would have. But otherwise, I don't see that we need this. It's, it's a distraction, and especially at night. You may say during the day, they won't notice it that much and everything. And the boom doesn't really show how much you'd see that. But at night, it makes a big difference in driving along and, and what the people who live around in that area see. So I have more questions than answers on this one.
Thank you, Andrea.
Rudy Hubner, followed by Jay Town.
Welcome back, Rudy.
Thank you very much. So my big concern with this sign, and notice I am not calling it a billboard because it's not going to bring in any ad revenue for the city. And that's the biggest issue I have with this because driving south on the 405, right there at the Euclid exit, which is, you know, not very far away from where this is planned to be, we're already going to have the twin billboards, which truly are billboards, which truly will generate ad revenue for the city. And from my perspective, you know, something that's going to bring money into the city, that's not going to cost the residents anything, but I'm for that because I can see the benefit. But with this sign, not only is it going to be, you know, competing with these other two signs, it's not going to directly be generating revenue for the city. And I'm not against a business wanting to advertise its presence. And yes, I'm sure that they spend a lot of money on SEO to make sure that they come up number one on Google searches. I just don't see the need for it to be this elaborate and this digital, especially when there's really no large-scale community benefit which separates it from the other billboards that are going up, you know, less than a mile away. And so I would just ask to consider maybe a redesign, maybe something that's not going to be quite so flashy, but something that could still be a good monument for the business to say, yes, we're here. Yes, we want to be good stewards in the community and to reach a point of compromise that satisfies both the need to announce your presence for your business, but at the same time, not pollute our airspace with too much digital signage in such a close proximity along this narrow stretch of the freeway. Thank you.
Thank you, Rudy.
Jay Town, followed by Zach Shabtai.
Oh, not yet, Zach, you're second.
Zach, you're next, you're up.
Jay Town's first.
After one more person.
Okay, okay. My battery's low. Oh dear. Mike Thompson's LED billboard, again. Why do we bother with sign ordinances? We used to limit the height. Now we're here to consider if it's okay to have a sign that's five or six stories tall. Really? We used to be, we used to care that our little bedroom community was a nice place to live. We didn't look at that skeleton sign from Greenbrook. There are two-story houses with windows facing that RV lot, but we didn't look at that. Bright billboards don't make a nice place to live. It doesn't matter if this five-story sign is on the freeway or a 10-foot sign is on Brookhurst. A flashing sign is a flashing sign. Where does it end? Let's just take the easy way out and not have a sign ordinance at all. Who cares? Safety. Southbound on the 405 between Brookhurst and Harbor Boulevard, there are three onramps, there are three offramps, all within about a mile. When I'm getting on the freeway from the Euclid Ellis on-ramp, which is the only way I know how to get on the freeway, I, you have to watch the lights carefully to make sure that you go when you're supposed to go. There's four lanes. You have to merge out of the slow lane so you don't end up on Harbor Boulevard. So I try to get over and get out of the way into the fast lane, which is really where I want to be anyway, as quickly as I can. And I do not want anybody driving south towards me at 70 to 90 miles an hour. Trust me, yes, because I do that too. I don't want them distracted by a sign that changes its message every eight seconds. I don't want an LED sign. I don't want a non-LED sign. I don't want a piece of paper floating in the air. Studies show that the presence of billboards, and I looked it up, distracted eye movements from the road ahead and delayed responses to road signs. The presence of billboards changed drivers' pattern of visual attention, increased the time needed for drivers to respond to road signs, and increased the number of errors in this driving task. Digital billboards distract drivers both visually and cognitively. The bright lights, movement, and dynamic images easily draw drivers' attention and gaze, even when they do not mean to take their eyes off the road. This is a visual distraction. I want them to pay attention to my car, not run into me. I think that would be better. This particular sign generates no revenue for our greedy little town. It implies that $100,000 motorhome purchase will be influenced by this sign. I'm sure if people are driving down the freeway and see this sign, they're going to rush right off that exit at Euclid and come right down Ward Street, right by my house, and hurry up and buy that motorhome before it goes away.
Jay, your time's up.
Really? Please don't add that sign.
Thank you, Jay.
Zach Shabtai.
Welcome, Zach.
Thank you for all your services. I'm trying to be a good neighbor. I own the next to this building is called Rox Plus. And it's the, this Rox Plus sitting back, not too close to the freeway. And Mike Thompson will put this big sign. I'm worried that it's going to cover my signage and my view that I've been there for the last 20 years and like to stay the same. This is no benefit to our location at all. The size is very big and it's right in front of Rox Plus. Maybe they can move the sign further to the middle of their 1,000 square, 1,000 linear foot space they have away from our site or some other solution. But I like to give my view. I try to be good neighbors, so no, no bad feeling. Whatever you decide, you should consider the next-door neighbors' signature signs and the ways where they cover that location. It's too big, too close. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thanks for your comments.
I have no other requests to speak on this item.
Okay, at this point, not saying it's the last chance. I'm not going to, not, you've already spoken. I'm sorry, you can't ask, you can't speak again. You get one shot. All right, at this point, I'm going to close the public hearing. And George, Frank, do you guys want to?
Mayor and council members, it's been a long time to get here. And a lot of good comments that were made tonight, but I think that they're not aware of how this whole operation works. So maybe I can shed some light on that. First of all, this is a really elegant sign. It's placed in an appropriate spot. It is in part of the community that it fits. That's really important. This particular business, without a sign, looks like a storage lot. Anybody else knows about it in the city, but not everybody that's going through the city knows that. What they see is the top of an RV. Because Caltrans went ahead and put a big block fence along in front of that place and basically made it so that you can't see any of that. Okay? So by allowing this sign to do its job, which is a tool, this sign is set up so that it's painting a picture. And it's not designed for people to be driving on the road and said, oh, I'm going to pull off the road to go buy an RV. That's not how it works. What we're doing is we're letting people know as they commute through our community that Mike Thompson has these makes and models that are here and that the image that you're seeing here being portrayed can be yours. What does that mean? We're inviting families to come on into this community to get a piece of what this picture displays. And we'd rather not have these people pass by our city, go into the other cities and spend their dollars. We want to keep them in Fountain Valley. We also want these people that are coming in that are low-impact, they're, when I say low-impact, we don't have the Costco crowd coming in on a daily basis. We don't. What we have is very select people with the idea of family fun. We are introducing them to this great community. Without that sign and without Mike Thompson's, first of all, Ward Street doesn't even have an exit. In order for somebody to get to this location, it's really difficult. And what we're doing is, we are showing the community that we have a first-class operation and one that they would be proud to go in and buy it because this is not a fly-by-night lot. Every other business in this, this business has one of these types of signs and all around our community. Why are we sitting here looking at an asset and not embracing it? Those sales tax dollars that we're talking about are nothing compared to what this thing will generate. We are going to keep, you know, billboards, yeah, they may have a billboard. They also could, that billboard be advertising our competition right up the street. No one could say no. What does that do? Oh, yeah, you got the revenue from that, a portion, a portion of it, but you lost all the sales tax. You lost all the businesses, like this general. You lost all the businesses like this gentleman has next door to be able to shop and get off the freeway, and actually see what's in Fountain Valley. When they come over to the city, they're gonna end up having dinner, they're gonna have, they're gonna use the services in here. And along with that, you know what? The other, what was really interesting that I heard, too, was that you had the CIF wrestling folks here, right? Y'all had a great presentation, what a great way to set that off, to take that picture that you see of all you guys there, and be proud enough to, and we would be proud enough to display it on that, and say, congratulations. Everybody would know, not just the people that heard your meeting tonight, or picked up whatever. And the idea that this is gonna cause a distraction, let me just tell you where the distraction's at, this. And what a sign does versus this, is it keeps the viewer's eyes between the dash and his visor. He's keeping the view out in front of him. He sees that, but he doesn't see this, and where the cars are, end up changing lanes, or having issues because, and I've seen it on a daily basis, I'm guilty of it myself. I'm sitting there looking at a text or an email, and I don't even see what's going on in front of me. This actually has studies to it, that Caltrans has done, that the accident rate is actually lowered. And it's example for, that you see in this particular arena that we're all accepting, is you've seen the schools, right? The schools have them all in front of the school, and you know how chaotic a school is with, with one of these things going on? With, you know, it's there, there's not an accident going on, it's information, it's a tool, it's a very valuable tool. In order for this business to be able to be successful, is extremely necessary that he is able to do that and compete. And the only way you can compete in this market right now, is that you have to be able to condition people that you are there, and that you have first-place, place, first-class models, makes and models, and the only way this can be done is with a sign like that. Would we rather see all the Fords and Chevys and all the signs up and down the freeway? When you can do it with one sign, clean and tasteful, not flashing, not bright, these are photocell, this is a first-class sign. It has got a photocell system in this thing, it's unsurpassed, it's set up by the GPS system, it has got failsafe systems in this thing that will keep that from not happening. The most, the most dis-effective way that you can do a sign at night, which is what I'm concerned as well, too, is to have it bright. Why? Because it has a negative connotation to the business that we're trying to display. Why would we want to do that? We don't. Businesses that want to do this right, use that as an effective tool. The ones that you see, that you have an opinion of, of other things, they don't understand it. My company, when we put one of these things up, it's designed to be effective. We have, we put that display up at 40 feet, because that is the focal point. There's 10 feet, but we also have a 12-foot fence that we are overcoming, that's sitting in, you know, we have a fence plus a retaining wall that ends up dropping us down. So I'm just, I'm, I'm looking at this thing, and I'm saying to you guys, I know everybody's not aware of how this works, really, they don't. But I've been in this business for almost 30 years, and I'm, I'm here to tell you how effective this is, and in order for us to be in business, this needs to be there. We're way behind the curve on all the other businesses around us, you've been watching all that sales tax revenue leave the city. It's time to keep it here. Show off the city. How about this? You have, we can put up on that thing, your Mile Park, and all the activities you've got going on in there in a tasteful way. How else are you gonna do that? Without, people are going by that 405 freeway, they're never gonna come off this freeway unless they have a purpose. We're gonna have that thing, it's like the, the town choir that got in the middle of the city, and he was telling everybody what was going on. That's what that does. It is the most effective and tasteful way to do it. And I'm, and it's not been put in the downtown city, it's not in everything, and by, by doing such a thing, we keep this business viable. That's the most important part, and I think we're a good steward. This is a low-impact business, it is clean, it is family-oriented, and it is a perfect fit for that location. It's not, you know, the community is not surrounded by this at all. We are setting it back, we're being tasteful on that, that thing, and we've been great stewards of this business for a long time, and then we have a record to show for it. And what we need is this particular tool to make it work. So I'm gonna introduce you, this is Mr. Degalas.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Here is to my wife of 49 years, Donna. I understand and respect some of the things you folks said about long-term the community. I've been married here 49 years. I've operated Mike Thompson's RV, Donna and I, since 1978. We've operated here 25 years. I, too, am a long-term resident in my house. Gosh, I only lived in the same house in Huntington Beach for 42 years, but we finally moved next door. We built another house, and there we are now, going on 47 years. So I respect the continuity of the community, and that's what we're trying to do. But the reality is here, folks, I need your help. We're currently, last year, we lost money. We're losing money again this year. Mike Thompson's has been the number one, you can look it up, the stats, RV dealer in California for a number of years. We're now number three and four, depending on the count. Between Caltrans doing what they did to our Santa Fe Springs store, and now here, it's devastated us. We've lost the visibility. Somebody said kind words about our, our waterfall. Well, that was a nice thing to do, and it was very effective, people looked at it, and funny how nobody seemed to think that was the problem, looking at a waterfall. It was beautiful, and it did a job. But meanwhile, Caltrans cured that with what they did. And I understand public safety and have to have ballards and all that, but the reality is, you can't see it. When we first developed that site in the same room, I said I would love to build little pads to have some RVs on the freeway there, but I really didn't want to spend more money, we're already over our budget trying to develop this thing. Boy, it instantly became a condition. I wanted the pads, so when you drove by, you saw the RVs, and it didn't look like a storage yard. Folks, what you have now, looks like an RV storage yard. Behind it are buildings that look like RV repair shops. We've lost that, that freeway visibility, and here we are today. So what we're trying to do, and the reason we need the sign that we're talking about, is when you view it going northbound, the center divider is now very high, it's concrete. That's again, I presume, to cut the light shining through the freeway, blinding the drivers coming the other way, we all had to, all had that happen. We need it high enough that you can see it. The reason it's on that end of this facility, it's got, got with a gentleman who designed signs, thought it should be anyway, but it's furthest away from all the residents. It's also closest to the berm of where the, the Euclid overpass is, it's a bit higher there. So we're trying to get as close to that as we can, because those people have a better view looking down, and we're gonna take the sign and have it be at an angle, it's gonna face that way for that portion, and this way for the portion going southbound, trying to get that view. I'm not an idiot. I wouldn't be spending $600,000 to put a sign in your community if we weren't thinking would affect sales. I heard some comments about revenue. We've brought $897,000 with a sales tax to the city of Fountain Valley in the past. We're not doing it today, folks, in fact, we probably won't be here if we don't end up getting this business operating. I need to be like all my competitors, on the freeway with a reader board. My other locations have signs. In fact, the city of Santa Fe Springs bought me a sign to encourage sales and increase sales tax. So what we're just trying to do is stay in business and be competitive, and we want to lose the storage lot look. The reason I want so much the sign is I gotta get across to the people that this is an RV dealership. And I, our feelings were the sign, particularly going north, having an image of an RV, not 9995, that's not gonna help me. I need an image of, of an RV, hopefully in front of a stream or something, and the people will know that there's an RV dealer there. That's why we need to look, sign on top. Here's an image of an RV, and Mike Thompson RV, what did it tell you? There's an RV dealership over there. If that's all the sign does, that's a huge deal. The freeway has been a nightmare, however, folks, I don't know the traffic count going forward, 384,000, 354,000 cars per day used to generate, should be significantly more. We're hoping that the increased traffic and this, trying to get the visibility back will let us increase our sales and end up making us profitable again, and you folks would generate, I understand, Vice Mayor commented about, you know, the reality is of the economics. Well, I'm certainly pacing them, losing money. Well, you guys are trying to balance your budget. Well, it doesn't hurt anything to keep me in business, one, and two, help me grow sales, because you, we're partners. When I sell something, the sales tax, 1% of it, if they pay 9% sales tax, I'm not sure everybody knows that, 1% goes to the city, and that's been, that's been millions of dollars we've brought in. We'd like to bring more, and I'd like to get back to being number one in California, but I need your help. And as far as the other question, let's see, visibility, public service, I, I'm happy to do that. I understood originally, when I, when I talked to a few of you, we thought we couldn't do it legally, and I guess we can. I think there's a benefit to me, selfishly, to have a public service message on it, so it isn't viewed as just a friggin' sign. By the way, we're selling family fun. We're selling mothers and fathers taking their kids and their wives out. We're not selling bras, we're not selling other things, we're selling family fun, and if you want to put a message on there about your mile square, or your, we talked to this guy, their kids are cool, and they, they're so friggin' proud, okay? I guess you guys did some trick. I asked, what the hell's going on in there, you know? And they said that they just, they did CIF twice, twice, they're so, so proud. They need to put that up there, and it, it value, it's valuable to the city, it makes us part of the community, makes us look like a good guy, we sure as hell wanna look a good guy, because most people presume a car dealer's a flake, we're not, but they feel you are, so you have to look good, and it's, it's a value to you. So that's it. I, I'm happy to answer any questions if anybody has any questions.
All right, thank you for your time, appreciate it. Councilwoman Constantine.
I do, actually. It's actually for the, the two gentlemen. Have you guys been around there, like, at 1:00, 2:00 in the morning? I drive around a lot.
No, I have not, but it's a sign, but the sign's not gonna be on at that hour.
No, no, no. I want you guys to do as much business as you can, but I think where it is, is not this, and, and people are messaging me, and this is great. You're missing out on lighting opportunities. You have lighting opportunities there at the business. What about to build platforms to display RVs and put in the previous style of a static sign? You see, we don't want to see the word "blowout" all over, and I know that's a buzzword.
Well, let me, let me ask you, answer your specific question. The freeway is higher than the lot. Frankie, when I did this deal with the city, I had no idea it was covered with bushes along there. I presumed it was like the other side, where we have our trailer operation, which is about a foot higher. It's down in a hole. We had to put the pads up to get them up, to create that vision you saw that looked really good. The problem is that RVs are long, and to get them on that pad, we had to put long entry, ramps. Well, now we gotta raise them about three more feet to be able to, because we gotta get past all that stuff. And we still can't get past the fence, because the fence is not porous, they use a material that prevents light from going through. You can still see, but you only see, we go, look to the right angle. So it's gonna be really high, well, guess what happens? My ramp that was excellent, I don't have the right stuff here, this long, well, now it's gonna be this long. Well, it doesn't work, it uses up all the space, we just lost a bunch of space, freeway expansion. And the other thing that happens, if a dummy salesman leaves the keys in the ignition, and a, and a kid turns the key on and pulls it in gear, what happens? A 28,000-pound motorhome runs down and kills five people, because I'm not gonna have the ramps, I had them for years, and they scared the hell out of me, okay? They just not, and they kill, they kill the prop, so that doesn't work. I'd love for it to work.
Well, nevertheless, I mean, you are missing out on lighting opportunities. I mean, I hear from residents all the time, you guys used to have more lighting there, and for whatever reason.
We're trying to, but they're just finishing, Caltrans has just recently moved up. We'll put more lighting on, but, but.
But that would only work at night. It's not gonna work during the day, which is the majority of your people that you're driving by.
Sure. What about networking opportunities, various chambers of commerce, social media? I hear your commercials all the time on the radio, Fountain Valley, I hear it, it's great. But social media, networking opportunities, making connections with people, again, this is a very particular type of purchase, it's not an impulse.
However, ma'am, with all due respect, we've gone from number one to number four doing those only. Having a freeway presence, we were number one. You folks generated, we generated enormous sales. So, you know, I'm open-minded, hell, if you've got an idea that works, we want to hear, but we're doing all those other things now with abandon, and we're doing everything we can, but without the freeway frontage being viable, why the hell are we here? Why do I take over Dylan RV down, which is a distinct possibility?
So why not, why not a static advertisement sign? Why does it need to be this?
Well, no, it's, she's saying, well, just instead of, and not have the digital, well, what you're doing is, you're limiting your ability to be able to put all the makes and models.
Well, wait a minute, who's gonna be, wait a minute, you want people reading makes and models as a driving guy?
No, 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 but styles. Again, a quick lesson, square motorhome looking, that's Class A, it looks like that. A mini motorhome goes along and has a cab over affair.
That we've got all those.
The vans are small, and some people say, oh, gosh, I can drive that, honey. So we like to, we, you know, you're, you're saying 9995, that's not gonna help me. I mean, what's gonna help me is, is them to see we have all types of motorhomes. We have long diesel pushers, we have mini motorhomes, as they call them, we have van conversions, or, and all, all of, so that they can see those images. And Frankie, I'll probably fight with my own people, because if they want to put a value message going this way, you know, I might do some, okay? But it's not gonna accomplish what I, we need that side, again, the southbound, I mean, northbound, we need to get those people to know we're there.
Right.
And I, frankly, I get the same problem in Santa Fe Springs. I'm gonna spend another $600,000 there, because when Caltrans got done, the good news is, there's more traffic, there's, you know, less, less congestion, I love that. People are gonna start, by the way, everybody says, I know you're here. There's millions of people, I mean, millions of trips that have avoided these, this freeway, because who the hell want to get in this parking lot? When I visit the store from Huntington Beach, I go up PCH, come up Brookhurst, people are now using the freeway again, because it flows. And we, you know, with all due respect, somebody lives in Fountain Valley, and they know we're here, well, no kidding, okay? It's the person you want to get here, is somebody that's far away, and they have no interest in this area, they live way over there, and they're going to San Diego, and they drive by, and they see an enormous presence of trailers and motorhomes. And then, then even the market, two years from now, and we've been doing this 50 years, so we, we're long-term buyers, we're long-term planners. They drive down, they say, you know, maybe an RV's we ought to look at. You know, there's that big place on the 405, used to be place of the waterfall, okay? And they'll remember that, and they'll come see us, and we'll, we will have showed them images, that's what's important about this digital sign, you know? You can't just have a.
Mix of landmarks.
I could put a giant sign, Mike Thompson RV, worthless. We need to have something.
So, Councilmember Constantine, any more questions?
I'm good.
You're good for now? Councilmember Harper?
Well, thank you. Well, first of all, I want to, I want to say thank you to Mike Thompson's for being a partner in Fountain Valley with us for so many years, really appreciate the, the business that you do and being partners with the city. I think, you know, as a city, as a council, part of our, part of our duty is to partner with businesses in the city, especially successful ones and iconic ones like Mike Thompson's. I mean, this is, you guys are, like you said, used to be the number-one dealer, you have RVs in the, in the state, you're number three now, but I think you'll be back to number one soon, hopefully.
With your help.
And, and I think, you know, with all due respect to Councilmember Constantine, you know, these people know their business a lot better than we do, and if, you know, they feel that the sign like this will help with sales, that's a win-win. It's good for them, it's good for the city, generates sales tax dollars for us. I like the, you know, the lifestyle idea, I think it's a really nice sign and well-done, and I am, you know, fully supportive of this endeavor, and, you know, whatever else we can do to help you.
I appreciate it, we have been, we, we, I appreciate the kind words, we have tried not to be a pain in the ass, you know, in this community, we do not have the police serving 10 minutes. Our clientele are generally very good people, we have our own nighttime security, we have beams, we've done everything humanly possible to make life. We've done everything humanly possible to make life simple for everybody. Your police department is great, fire people are great, but we just seem to never have them there, other than visiting to buy an RV. You know, our goal is to be low impact.
Councilmember Kinnon? Oh, Vice Mayor Bowie, you go first, please.
You mentioned that, you know, you have considered looking at a pad. And the reason why you're not doing it because it requires a longer ramp? Well, when you say safety, well, if you put on the pad, I won't show that RV as a, as a showcase vehicle in the first place anyway, because walking up, walking down, it's a risk of falling because it's much higher elevation aside from leaving the key on there. I won't showcase that as one of the RV model. But have you considered hydraulic pad?
We've looked at it, there's some issues there, and we might very well look at that also, okay? But that doesn't solve the problem inside the freeway. You've, you've got, southbound is a lot easier. I mean, it's not easy, it's, we're devastated by what they did. Again, the raising of the Ballard from no Ballard, basically a chain link fence, you can look straight through at any angle to a, to a, what is it, four, five, five foot, like, concrete Ballard? And then I think a six foot fence that you can't see through. And if you get a right angle, you'll see, but that, so it, it really becomes difficult, okay? And particularly on the other side of the freeway.
Okay, the reason why I say that because I've seen some other RV locations, I'm not going to mention what location or where, and they, they have that same issue, and they have put on hydraulic ramp very high. Actually, because you mentioned the, the purpose of this sign was to showcase the RV. Right now, it's been hidden by, you know, the, the concrete block and the fence, so that's why you put hydraulic to raise it higher.
We have considered that, and we've looked at ways to make it safe. One of the concerns I have back to kids is if I did something, I have to have something, again, salespeople are great, but they're fairly irresponsible. I don't need them lowering the lift over the guy's dog or the kid. So we have to build a way to contain it to where it goes in. We've talked to the city about that, we, and we'd like to look at that. But we still need visibility on this side, in the, the, the display sign accomplishes that. That's on the table too, and I appreciate your thoughts because I, I agree with you.
Okay, my follow-up question is, have you considered remodeling your building so it does not look like an RV repair shop like you just stated earlier? And if you go to a second story, so you could put perhaps your company name, brand on the building like Hyundai, right? So with the distance, now you could see, I'm trying to visualize this, your RV on a pad, hydraulic, your building go a second floor, so you see Mike Thompson, because right now with the current, with the current RV, you can't even see your building.
Yeah, digital signs on all their hearts.
Yeah, I, I think, first of all, we had a hard time getting the city to approve what we have. It sounds like you're more open-minded now, but I don't believe the name Mike Thompson's going to do it. I mean, I don't believe in the gorillas floating in the balloons and stuff. But, I mean, the shape of an RV on top of the building would accomplish that. But it'd be kind of stupid looking, okay? I'm thinking about it at Santa Fe Springs, trying to get, and the only way to come up with is a, is a display sign to show an RV image. So we can get more signage, and let's say you guys are understanding, I'd love to talk about that, but I'm not sure it's going to solve my problem. It's going to just have Mike Thompson more, which in my mind's cheaper than a 40, 50, $50,000 minimum to five, six, oh, gosh, they're now $800,000 motorhome, that are all, you know, fantastic paint jobs. They're really pretty, okay? And I just think that, that's absolutely going to be unoffensive, I think people love it. It's family fun, grandparents and stuff. We know we're not selling Porsches, the guys go out with their wives. We're selling family, family fun.
Right, you know, and then with, to your point, that that's an office building, right? They're not selling art, they're not selling cars there, right? But if you go around the community, at every one of these auto dealers, what do they have on the freeway? One of these.
All right, any other questions? Vice Mayor Bowie?
No, that'll be all.
Okay, Councilman Kinnon?
I just want to layer on a couple of comments, echo what Councilmember Harper mentioned. But I also want to share with the audience that we, that I spent some time with both of you, and I really appreciate that. You've worked really hard. Procedurally, there's still a long way to go. We're not, we're not talking actually about your sign tonight. It just happens to be sort of the medium of getting through the ordinance process. But what I do want to point out is, at the end of the meeting, you sort of had me in tears because you have given so much to the community. If anybody gets a chance to talk to this gentleman, I encourage you to do it because, you know, it just, it blew me away. So that just, to me, that adds, regardless of this ordinance, regardless of how this ends up, I appreciate what you've done for our community, and I thank you for your efforts. No more comments.
Anyone else? All right, I've, I've got a couple.
Forgive me, I have a really bad back, I gotta sit down.
Yeah, no problem. So how much incremental revenue do you anticipate doing if you had a sign?
Well, I'm sorry, but I gotta sit down, I'm back.
Yeah, you're fine.
I, I, I believe in under promising over delivering. You know, what's happening with rate cuts? I just read an article that the Federal Reserve's talking about not lowering rates now, you know? So I don't know where we're going. All I can do is if the pie is this big before, and we had this big a slice, the only thing I can do is if the pie gets smaller, and it has, is to get a bigger slice, okay? And then as the pie grows, I'll keep that. I, I wouldn't be spending $600,000 if I didn't think it'd increase sales significantly. He kicks the number 20%, I can't validate that. I'd like to see the sales go up a whole lot more than that because this is kind of like the politics today. We've put in a lot more jobs since COVID. Well, hell yes we did, we had, we didn't, we lost all the jobs. We're, with the old saying, it's hard to fall out of bed when you're laying on the floor. Folks, we're on the floor right now, so it won't take much for us to increase our sales. This company's done 5,400 RVs in a year, we did 2,500 last year. So that kind of answers your question. We can regain the volume we had, it's a doubling of sales. But I don't want to come here and promise that because then I'll be the car dealer that everybody thinks we are, okay? And not everybody.
So, all right, how about for staff? Based on where the sign is potentially going to go, do we have an idea of how many feet from the water tower that's going to be the potential sign at the water tower?
I don't have an exact figure, I can only estimate it based on an aerial.
Ballpark.
Well, yeah, I just did a Google map on that, it's 2,093 square feet.
Almost a quarter of a mile, I mean, a half a mile.
Significant.
2,090. It's, yeah, 2,000, 25, 5,280 feet.
So, so here's my issue. My issue, and I, and I spoke with you gentlemen, and my issue hasn't changed since we spoke, is we have two electronic billboards going in, the closest one at the water tower, which will bring significant revenue to the city. With that, I, I understand you guys will bring in additional sales tax revenue, I get it, I get it. My concern is if Caltrans, we're already on, on tough terms with them right now, getting what we want put in. If we put this in and they come back and say, you know what, we are, the new rule is that it's 2,500 feet. You know, you can't have two signs within 2,500 feet of each other. We're in trouble. And we've already did the big fight with the community to get what we needed. And believe me, it's not because we want electronic billboards, it's because we want revenue for the city that doesn't cost our residents out of their pocket. So to put this in there, my concern is, what I would like to see is, and is wait. Wait until we get our sign in and let's see what happens.
Well, if we do that.
I'll probably not be here. And we probably, that's the. To answer your question candidly and not being threatening, I'll probably move.
And, and the only reason.
I really don't have a choice, I have to succeed. I've got people that have been with me 40 years that are not making a living. So I think you folks should consider not the incremental, but the base level, the 900,000 you're getting because it may go to zero. And there's just not a lot of uses of that property that makes sense, and particularly in a declining automobile sales market. You know, I need to be, I have to have something that works, and it works in my other stores. And, you know, the guy down the street selling whatever the hell he's selling, that sign, it's, it's way the heck down there, and that's not an on-premises sign. This is basically a business sign. It's a whole different ballgame than any, any kind of billboard. Regular, they have no, they have no say in this, am I correct?
No, you're absolutely correct.
It's an on-premises sign, it's a whole different ballgame.
It's an on-premise sign that is not regulated by Caltrans at all, okay? So that's, let's take that off the table because it's not.
Actually, I'm going to ask that Omar, do we, you're shaking your head, he's correct? Because that's my biggest concern right now.
Yes, that's correct, it's not an off-premise sign, it's not an advertising billboard, so it's not subject to Caltrans regulations. If it was, then they would be subject to those same restrictions that we're having issues with right now in terms of placing the billboards up along the freeway as well.
And then to buttress what you said, Mayor, also, or follow up on what you said. You said, well, what if they change it from 1,000 feet to 2,000 feet? Do you know how rare that would be to be able to happen? Do you know how much impact that would create? Yeah, I get what you're saying, what if, what ifs? I hear what you're saying. The likelihood is in almost zip because every single one of these billboards are set that they have to maintain 1,000 feet separation from the same side of the freeway. That's how the Caltrans outdoor advertising book has been written, okay? So you have millions invested up and down the freeway.
Well, they could grandfather those that are already in.
And you know, for you to think that it's going to happen in the next three years, I just don't see that happening. Maybe in 10 to 20 if that was possible, and the legislation would be all over the place before that happened, right? You would see a lot of that playing out before they made that kind of impact, right? I mean, because this is really a tool that the communities have for revenue, and it wouldn't affect the one on the other side of the freeway unless, again, they're going to change the rules entirely. Because a thousand-foot separation is only on the same side of the freeway.
I get that. I'm not worried about the one across the street.
I just think it's, Mayor, I, I just think it's that there's enough separation. If you go into other, other areas in the community, you'll see these signs that are separated of 1,000 feet, and you don't have a blight of signs, this is not what we have going on here. This is a well-placed sign in a well-placed business, and it fits it perfect. And I would hope that you reconsider that, that delay because delay is not going to help this business stay. And that's, that's, you know, we sat down and presented this thing almost 15 years ago. There was no Omar here, there was only a Matt here. Matt was here almost 15 years ago. And the council members, I don't remember if you're here or not, but we were ready to do this sign 15 years ago.
And the city was on board.
Yeah, and guess what happened? All of a sudden, they're doing the expansion on the 405, timeout. We want to wait.
But we didn't know how wide the freeway would be.
And which, which option are they going to pick? So there was three options. Are they going to do an HOV lane, and are they going to do this wide, are they going to do this wide? Well, time, clicking. That has cost you guys a whole bunch of money.
I don't think there's anything in my career, and I've done a lot, I've done billions of dollars of business that I've worked longer on to try and get a sign in this community. I mean, really, it's almost on my deathbed sometimes. Here's where he failed. I can't believe, I've been this unsuccessful since 2010, okay? I mean, it's shocking.
Please. All right. Councilwoman Constantine, please.
I just want to remind council that digital signs and billboards don't need to come to Fountain Valley. We have a say, thank you.
Yeah, so I guess at this point, I'd like to make a motion to approve alternative number one. I think this is a, this is a no-brainer. I think it's, you know, a win-win for, for the city and for Mike Thompson, and I am fully in support of, of your efforts. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, should I read the title?
Give me a second, I'm still thinking. It's, it's, it's not that I'm against the billboard, it's the timing, I'm struggling with that. So, yeah, go ahead, read the title, please.
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Fountain Valley adopting a notice of exemption in accordance with the Fountain, with the California Environmental Quality Act and approving code amendment number 23-03 to amend Fountain Valley Crossing Specific Plan to allow freeway-oriented signs with a digital display on properties meeting certain criteria.
Okay, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, more discussion still, so we have Vice Mayor Bowie?
So I applaud, I mean, for you trying to work with the city and generate revenue. The city definitely desperately needs revenue, that's for sure. To the mayor's point is, I do agree with him that I'm not sure if the timing is right. And I, when he just brought the distance, my second thought on the concern is when the other two sign that pops up, the big sign as well, in addition to what you proposed, the big sign as well, how is this going to cover the other sign from a certain distant point of view? Or how is that going to make it look too busy, right? Such a short distance, 2,000 feet, I mean, 2,000 feet sounds a lot, but when you do 60 miles an hour, 65, 70, it's a blink of an eye. So it's not that far, right? So that, that's, I, I, I'm a little concerned. So to, to, to the mayor's point, I, I'm think, I'm, you know, I want to do a substitute motion that perhaps we push this a little bit back a later time. And with you coming back and proposing the options, which is, I mentioned earlier, see if those are viable or not. If you don't think it's viable, then at least we know, you know, what, what are the options? Because you said you're looking to it, but you haven't really explored it in term of hydraulic pad, in term of having your building go a little bit higher, so have a nice name brand. Because you mentioned the, the purpose of having the sign is to showcase the RV that's been hidden. Well, if you move the hydraulic up, now you showcase the RV. Now, name brand, if you go to building up and you have the name brand of the building that served both purpose with it remove the content of advertising, that has gone away. I get that, you lose that content. But at least you showcase the product, you showcase your name brand, just as a consideration.
All right, so we have a substitute motion, is there a second? No second, so we're back to the first motion. I, I still have questions, so before we vote, Omar, questions for you, sir, please. Our community development director, deputy city manager, Omar Datavoy.
Yes, sir.
So if we approve the ordinance, we still have to, then they have to come back with a sign. So if we approve the ordinance, we could still reject the sign, correct?
Yes, there's two things that I believe would happen. One is they would need to apply for the sign, which would go to the Planning Commission Sign Committee. And so we would have that ability there. And then also, although we've gone through normal process with this application, it is a city-owned property. And so we, as the city and the landowner, would need to look at the lease agreement and then make any modifications necessary to the lease agreement before they, they install the sign on our, on our property.
Let me take that, that answer that you just said a little bit farther in depth. So you're saying that if we approve the ordinance today, that it still has to go through all those process? But let's, given the fact that the applicant have done everything by the book, I don't think we can deny it.
I'm sorry, deny it?
The applicant, the application for the permit, because they followed through their entire ordinance.
So if they meet the, the requirements of the ordinance, do, can we reject the sign still?
Yes, it's a three-body membership of the Sign Committee that would vote to approve the sign. It's not administrative approval necessarily. So then it, it's reviewed by the Sign Committee, it gets reported out to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission at that meeting would be able to review that as well, or, or they, they get a report and then they can choose to hear it or to let the decision of the Sign Committee stand.
Would it also give us the ability to say where the sign can go? Like, could we make it, it has to be 1,500 square feet from our 1,500 continuous linear feet from?
The Sign Committee can review the location and the, the design of the sign. We would look within the parameters of the.
I'm sorry, I said 15, I meant 2,500.
We, the Sign Committee could look at the location, the, the design, and all the aspects of the, the proposed sign and in relation to any code amendment that the City Council approved.
Okay. I've never struggled on an issue so much before because I'm not opposed to signs per se. It's, it's, I want to protect the value to the city and to our residents and the potential income, which is substantial for the electronic billboard. I'm sorry, can you turn your mic on?
Sure, I, I don't know why you would. Sure. I, I don't know why you would jeopardize even the thought about it. I, I.
No, I would say if we do it, it might jeopardize the revenue.
Exactly.
Yeah. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I guess, I, I guess I, to me, it's obvious. You know, we, we just found out that the RV dealer in Westminster's for sale. You know, I think, I think we should be a little more accommodating to these, the folks right here. They're, you know, they've been a good partner with the city. It's, you know, it's not going to, it's not going to have a major impact on the, on the bill, on the other sign that's two thousand feet away. It's going to help their business. I think, you know, the sooner they get the, we approve this and they get the sign up, the better. I mean, don't, don't cut, cut your nose off to spite your face.
There's an excellent chance that I could negotiate a fifty percent sales tax sharing as I did here for twenty years, as I did in Colton, as I did in Santa Fe Spring. That's done deal. I can move to Westminster or someplace, and we're financially solid. We can write a check for any facility we want and pay cash for it. And I guarantee you, I can get fifty percent of my sales tax for twenty years. I can't guarantee I should say. But they'll work a deal. That's the financial realities. So when you folks are thinking dollars and cents, that's what can happen.
I appreciate you saying that. I don't necessarily disagree with you, but being in Fountain Valley, that is the prime spot on the freeway. So, I appreciate what you're saying. I think it's a huge advantage for you to be in Fountain Valley. Vice Mayor Bowie?
Thank you, Mayor. Omar Datavoy, please. Perhaps this will help. If we approve the ordinance tonight, as it is, and it goes to the process, planning commissions, and does it bring back to the City Council once more at for, with the decisions, or the, or the planning commissions make the decision? That's it?
So, as normally, what would happen is you would have the first reading today, tonight. And then if it was approved, you'd have a second reading. And then after thirty days, it would become effective. At that point, they could submit for the sign. The Sign Committee would review the application and make a determination. And then that decision can be appealed to the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission's decision can be appealed to the City Council.
Only if they appeal. If not, then it will get approved on the planning commissions.
Correct.
Thank you.
Councilmember Constantine?
So, when Vice Mayor Bowie was just talking about the value of the property, I want to say the gentleman was making a comment about subletting the property. Can, can we clarify what was being said there? Because I heard that.
I, I believe so.
Not you, the gentleman.
Well, I mean, I, I, I believe we'd have to defer to the city attorney a little bit, but they have a lease on the property. We'd have to look at their lease if they left the property and they wanted to sublease it, with their options.
As we can.
With their options.
Because I just want to be really clear. I, I know sometimes I come across as a little bit of a hard-nosed, but I really appreciate Mike Thompson's here in the city, always have. When I think of RVs, there's nobody else. There may be others, but there's nobody else. And so I talk about networking opportunities. You do the advertising on the radio. It's got to be very costly. There could be some other ways to drive business to your business without a whopping sign like this. Social media, making connections. The missed-out opportunities of lighting at the business. I, I mean, I'm not just sitting here saying no. There's some very valid points here. And, you know, I don't want to get into your business or anything, like what kind of marketing you have, but I think something's missing. That's just my thought. And again, I appreciate you so much. Thank you.
Okay. I think, at this point, any other comments from anybody? I think we have a motion and a second. Let's vote. Item number eight passes through two. All right. Congratulations. Thank you. We'll see you when it brings back to the Planning Commission what we, what the final sign will do.
Thank you for all your. And I apologize if I've been super candid, but I thought you needed to know the facts. And I hopefully have been respectful with that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your time.
Thanks.